Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call the order, special council meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM. First order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you take role, please.
Mayor Jacobs?
Here.
Mayor Protem Doold?
Present.
Councilmember Carefotis?
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Earl?
Here.
Councilmember Witt?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
We have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. So this is for the city manager candidate interviews, so I have a couple statements. One, the meeting is not going to be broadcast live, just so any candidates that we had coming in, or we have the one on Zoom, cannot see any of the questions, or they cannot hear what other answers are out there. It will be played back starting tomorrow. Our candidates, we thought we had three. We are at two because Ken Martin dropped out at approximately 5:00 this evening. They are in alphabetical order. All candidates will be asked the exact same questions. Candidates, obviously, are in other rooms. We thought we were going to have more. Each council member will ask two questions, and they will be the same for all candidates. So having said all that, I would like to welcome Mr. Gibbons, our first candidate.
Mayor, I have a question about the agenda.
Okay.
We talked about it last night. It says public comment, non-agenda items only. This is exactly what I was talking about. We have several people that came, and then they're not allowed to comment. Can we say that... I'm not talking about talking to him. I'm just talking about commenting about why they're here.
I think we'd have to take a... There'd have to be a motion and a vote on that, right?
I mean, it's a public meeting.
If you want to suspend the rules, take a supermajority of the use of them. That's what the rules say.
I don't have them in front of me again, so again, I'm prepared. So I can't...
So council could make a motion if they wanted to suspend the rules and allow comment on that, but I would caution council and remind them, it is public comment. It's not back and forth questioning, you know?
And it's not a question to them. It's just a statement they make, right? Because they're not going to have another chance to do that, correct? This is our only interview.
Well, there would be...
It would be after we interviewed both candidates.
If council makes a recommendation for a hiring, then that would be time for them to speak regarding the proposed hiring.
So it would have to be a...
Can I make the motion? Can I make the motion that we suspend it for tonight? The matter today had to be a supermajority, so if you don't...
Still have to have a supermajority.
Support?
Support from Councilmember Doold. Counsel?
Nothing wrong with letting the public speak.
That'd be a roll call, right?
We can do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Carefotis?
Aye.
Councilmember Doold?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
No.
Councilmember Witt?
Aye.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
No.
Mayor Jacobs?
Aye. Okay, so at the end of the meeting, we'll allow comments. Same thing, three minutes. Won't be a question to answer. Okay. Mr. Gibbons, welcome. Good evening. I will start with just a generic question of tell us something about yourself that you think we would like to know.
You know, being a former employee of the city and knowing all of you, you know, it may be a little redundant to tell us a little about yourself, but I think it's important, you know, in any job interview, to put yourself in the context of, you know, a little bit about your history that at the moment puts the context of the answers you give. So just, you know, a little about me, you know, Tim Gibbons. I was born in Garden City, Garden City Hospital. My roots run deep to Garden City. My grandparents moved here from Eastern Kentucky in the 60s, like so many did, in search of a little better quality of life near and around a lot of the auto industry. My mom and dad moved here, moved me here when I was six years old in the early 80s. Went to St. Rayfield's for elementary school with the Divine Child for high school. Then I went to Eastern Michigan University, where I obtained a degree in public law and government, which is like a political science, public administration with a focus on a law degree. Then I became a police officer. I met my wife, Jill, in college, but we got married when I, my first year being a police officer. Started getting a paycheck and got a wife, and we both had, you know, I've raised three kids, two in high school, one in elementary school right now. At the police department, I worked my way from patrolman all the way to chief. During that course of time, probably 2006, 2007, a lieutenant comes to me and says, "Hey, hey, Tim, you want to take the law school admissions exam?" And I'm like, "Hey." Apparently, I don't have anything better to do, sure. And I ended up taking the exam. I put it off a couple times so I could study real well, and I did really well. I ended up getting a full honor scholarship to law school. I only had to pay for the books. Law school really opened my eyes, you know, both for law enforcement and the entire world. I got out of law school. I passed the bar exam pretty quickly, opened my own private practice, operated on the side, did labor attorney law, did some employment, did family law, did a little bit of criminal. But then, really, what I've done, I teach labor law to law enforcement agencies and those that have to deal with police agencies. I teach Melissa's civil liability. I teach leadership to law enforcement agencies. Really, a depth of a pretty broad, and it's served me very well at this city. You know, when you get the inner workings of city government, particularly in Garden City, you know, Bob particularly, once I got my law degree, you know, whether it was marijuana nuisance issues, the Compatible Offices Act and things like that, he brought me in, and actually, I know my opinion had impact, and it seems to have had that all the way through, even with this last city administration. And I've had the great fortune of having, as I said, two mentors, both who were police chiefs and became city managers. And, you know, certainly, I've heard through the grapevine, there's some consternation, oh, great, another police chief will become city manager. But, you know, honestly, when you talk about that, I think if I'm being compared to Dave Kozas, Dave Harvey, and Bob Meery, all three of whom led this city through what I would say is the toughest economic time since the Great Depression. This city lost 50% of its taxable revenue, and we are only dealt with and got us through that. And in 2018, when the last city manager took office, it was that 50% fund balance, $8 million in the bank, and that really well-running city, that the last city manager was able to do so many really positive things around the community. So I actually wear that with a little bit of badge of honor, like, yes, another police chief who wants to be city manager, I feel like I've learned from the best. So, you know, I have a great fondness for this city. It's done a lot for me in my life, in tough times.
With this position being a very important role in our city, how do you prioritize work? And then, secondly, to go with that, is what are your goals for the first 30 days, six months, and then a year to follow?
So first on, the first question, prioritizing work. I have built my life, I enjoy two things. I enjoy my family and my job. That's me. I don't, I try to golf. I don't. I try to do a lot of things outside, but it just, it always fails because I enjoy those two things. I think, you know, I'm a big believer in purpose. I don't enjoy doing much that doesn't have purpose. Frivolities are just, I'm not a huge fan of. I like making a difference in the world, and I think the best way a man can come to work every day and do something and have a positive impact on the lives of others, and you do a good job raising your family. That's my two priorities in life, and I don't stop working, you know, and I don't stop being a dad. Those are the two things I do, and that's just who I am. So if it's midnight, as a police chief, it's coming handy by tolerance of that, I don't mind being up solving a problem. If, you know, if it means I work a 12-hour day, that's okay, because I don't do the things that other people do, talk, but my job is my hobby. It's, you know, you don't go to law school with two brand-new babies while also working a full-time job if you don't like doing things, and that's just who I am and how I've always been. So when it comes to prioritizing work, you know, there's family and my job. Those are my two things. And I apologize, it was, the second question was long, and I want to make sure I get it right.
A 30-day plan, 60, six-month plan, and then one year, like to get your feet in.
Yeah, so 30 days, I think any time a city manager steps in, he meets with each council member and goes, "Hey, where are we at? What would you like to see from me doing my job?" Second is, during the course of those conversations, is to find points of commonality for each council member. There's always going to be disagreements between council members. They all come with different constituents, different perspectives, and a different look on life, which I think when you meld them all together can be really productive. At the end of the day, I think everybody wants the same thing. They want to improve the quality of life for themselves, they want to improve the property value, and they want to make this a great city to live in. So I would find those points, and then the first things I would try and work on is what everybody agrees on, because I think when you start doing things together, and I would agree within my ranks, I would try and, "Hey, what do we all agree on? Well, this is what we're going to work on first," and then we'll work on the rest of the stuff. And so that would be within my first 30 days to find those things. Second, I know, having watched budget meetings, having been here for pretty much the last bunch of budget issues, I would immediately identify those things that council would like. First, with, of course, the approval of council, but how do we not take as much from the general fund out of this first upcoming year? The year's already started. If it's councils, if council wants to keep it that way, sure, but it does seem as if there might be an idea that, "Hey, we want to make sure we don't dip if we don't have to." To make, and I guess at the end of the day, really just make this year as efficient and effective as it possibly can be, with less impact on that fund. And then a six-month plan would be to, I'm a big believer in process, so you can't always determine outcomes. Crazy things happen, especially in municipalities. Sometimes the market for houses fall apart, and you have to adapt. But if you develop the proper processes, as we have done at the police department and the ordinance division, that's where I think we've had the most success in process. We've developed a rental czar. We developed a method of enforcing ordinances, which, you know, there'll always be issues with ordinance, but we've certainly increased the quality of ordinance enforcement and the quality in the city. So for the six months is to build those processes with the assistance of my leadership team, and to make sure all those good things are getting done and find those best practices. And then for a year, you know, there's a lot of major projects going on here, and I would want to make sure all those projects are being fulfilled as promised, and we get the maximum benefit of those things. You know, this year, I think, coming up, if we're looking at it, it's a tougher year to get through, but, you know, in a following year, the bond drops off. There's about a $500,000 additional revenue that's going to come into the city. We're still experiencing, unfortunately, high inflation, but we'll also, part of the benefit there is from increased tax revenue. So that first year, getting through that within a fiscally responsible manner, not letting the bottom fall out because we had some significant increases, is to get us to a place where we can make sure that next year, we can start redoing those extra things we probably wanted this year, but we may have had to pause. But also, on the concept of a year, is, like I said with those projects, is to make sure any projects we have going forward have sound project management, and I watched that, our Parks and Rec director do the meeting about the Radcliffe summer on the 9th, and that was exactly the type of information I would hold myself to making sure is provided at all times, because I think what it does is it does a lot of things. One, it gets everybody's heads in the same place. We know where we're going, we know the adjustments we need to get there, but at the same time, it builds trust, and you can't do anything without trust. So this first year, I guess, if there's anything, I'm going to put number one, 30-60 day into a year, is building trust throughout the community. And that'll mean me as a city manager going, "I need to go to the library and see how I can cooperate with them and help the kids of this city visit the library." People pay two mils for this city for a library to run, we got to make sure this city's working with the library to do as best we can. Make sure the school district is on par with the police department and thinking the same. We just bought a community college, we're turning into a rec center, but to me, the most important day of the year for property value tends to be when kids go take standardized tests. It's huge, you know, whether you have kids or you don't have kids, the better the students are doing, the better all of our property values are, the better the kids are doing. So how can those three entities work together? How can I build trust with those three entities so that we can take advantage of all three of our resources and to assist them to being the best place we possibly can? We're doing great on crime, we're doing great on infrastructure. We're actually, it's awesome that we're talking about Parks and Rec. I can remember a time we were just trying to keep the lights on. So how can we maximize all those things? You know, and it might be a bit of me for that whole year, especially in the first part of it, taking tours around the city, meeting with Kiwanis, meeting with Rotary, meeting with Goodfellas, meeting with all those big organizations throughout our city that have such an impact on what we do, and getting everybody as close as we can to the same page. Nobody's always going to be, but that would be a primary goal of mine, to make sure that, you know, we're going to have differences of opinion, but we all have some common goals. And, you know, whether you're an employee, a citizen who owns a business in town, or a citizen who lives in town, we all have a vested interest in the success of this city, and I want to make sure everybody remembers that.
The second question, why do you think you're the best candidate for Garden City?
I heard a line today that actually made me feel like, okay, I'm going to say this because I get a kick out of it. I have knowledge of this city, and I have wisdom about this city. Knowledge is knowing that botanically, a tomato is a fruit. Wisdom is knowing not to put it in fruit salad. I know a lot about this town, and you can know a lot about budgeting, you can know a lot about the law, and you can know a lot, but I've lived the experiences both as an employee, as a police chief, as someone who's been here, and, you know, I don't know how many times in my first bunch of years during the beginning of the Great Recession, that I was told that I may not be working here by the end of the week because of economics and getting laid off. I've learned a lot of lessons, and I've watched those police chiefs turn city managers and recent city managers get through issues and tougher times, and I know what may seem like one approach, but the right one, because I've seen it done before. I've seen missteps, I've seen where we've gone wrong, and I've seen where we've gone right. And I believe that my education, plus my experience, plus my demeanor, is appropriate for this city at this time especially, but going forward, I have the best interests of this city at heart. Like I said, if this city, I tie what I do in life, both my family and my job, to my own purpose, my own success. So I know that they'll get 100% out of me, and I will do the best I can through the times as we take them of this city.
Okay. Councilmember Squires?
Okay. Thank you for coming out tonight. If I were to interview people who have reported to you in the past, how would they describe your management style?
Collaborative. I appreciate surrounding myself with people who disagree with me. I don't mean like, "Oh, you're always arguing with me." What I mean is, if I posit an idea, I want someone to tell me whether they actually think that's good or not. So I feel like I'm a very open person who you can have a discussion with and completely disagree with, and I will take that into account as I make my decision. I may not always agree with you, but I might, and you might completely, because there's been many of a time, the current police chief was my absolute go-to for, "You think, what do you think about this?" And he was always blunt, like, "That's a good idea," or, "Don't do that, that's dumb." Sometimes I even do it when he said it was dumb. But what you need is, as a leader, is to never be the emperor who's not wearing clothes thing, right? So my leadership style is very collaborative. I put trust in people, I put faith in people. Every police officer that got hired since I've been police chief got one speech when I made a phone call. I call them, and I go, "Hey, want to be a Garden City Police Officer?" They say, "Yes." All right, here's my expectation. This is a really tough job. There's no easy about it. You got to know more than anyone should be expected to. So here's what I actually expect of you, I want to make it simple. Good faith effort, and that means two things. Be kind and try your best. You give me that, do things for the right reason, I got you. So people who work for me, I think, one, I'm approachable. I invite their discussions, I give them an opportunity to be honest, I try and build trust, and I have their back as long as they're doing the right thing. That doesn't mean I don't hold people accountable. I've had to hold plenty of people accountable in my time, but there's no idea that I don't want to hear if someone believes in it that works for me. And I put, and I have people's back when they're doing their job, if they're doing it for the right reasons. You know, I know full well, especially in law enforcement, the best-laid plans can go awry, but if your intentions are right, and your effort was strong, then we can work it out, and nine times out of 10, everything will be okay, and it's good for a boss to have that. I don't micromanage, but I know what's going on. Bob Meery taught me that. He'd always let me make decisions, but he knew things that were going on that I don't know, "Do you have a microphone in here, like in the walls or something?" Because he knew, and I loved that, because he wasn't over top of my shoulder as I made decisions, but he, so he let me do, but he was always there to support me and always there to give me advice, but also knew what was going on to hold anything around the agency accountable. So I think all of those things, I think, is what people would say about me. I know, I know I have the faith of the majority, if not all, the employees of the city. I have great relationships with them, so.
Okay, thank you. Describe three components of your philosophy of management that demonstrates what you value and add as an individual to an organization's culture and work environment. And how have you demonstrated these in your past jobs?
Number one is I try and remain calm. I don't do knee-jerk reactions. I always maintain a level head, even when, even if internally I'm a little shocked, like, "Okay." Because sometimes I've known, you know, if you think about it, you know, they say, "Don't buy a car on your first trip to the car dealership," and it's that principle of, "Hey, if you have time, calm down, make a good decision, hear all the parts of it." Because sometimes, something will happen, and it's not as bad as it ends up seeming, but the reaction to it made it worse. So number one is maintain calm, you know. Two is, as I said, be trustworthy, you know, be a person that you can count on. Ultimately, an administrator isn't, you know, sometimes is the guy who has to get down and do the work and help, but for the most part, I'm there to help other people do their jobs, and if they trust me, they feel comfortable doing their jobs, and I'm assisting them, then I'm going to get the best out of every employee in the city. You don't work a place you don't trust, so, you know, that's a component of my leadership style, is to make sure I'm building trust every day. And lastly, you know, as I said, be approachable, be someone that people can come to, and hear them, though. There's so many awesome things we did at the police department. Most of them weren't my idea. The credit I'll take is that I heard a good idea, and I helped make it happen, and that's what a good boss does, you know? I'm not the end-all-be-all. There's no, there's no amazing things that I'm automatically going to come up with and rest, but what I am going to do is take the amazing people we have working for us and the amazing people we have in this community, and when I hear good things, I do know how to facilitate making them happen. Once in a while, I'll have a good idea, too, but generally, it's about being that conduit and hearing and listening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carefotis?
Does your past experience limit your success as a city manager, and what would be your steepest learning curve related to this position?
My past experience, I don't feel like would limit me at all. I think actually, if anything, it gives me a path to faster results. I don't have to learn a lot of lessons that people, that someone from outside, outside the city, or outside of the country, or outside of the state would have to learn. I know how Michigan operates. I know the laws in Michigan, I know how the tax structure works, I know how our budget works, I know where there's, I know what each account means. I know all of that, so I can hit the ground running on that. So my past experience, I think, only helps me. I don't think I've had, you know, as police chief, of course, sometimes you're going to have to make decisions that people don't like, but I don't think I've ever made any decisions that have caused anybody such vitriol that I can't work with them. And I don't really, you know, I honestly can't recall too many horrible encounters with anybody, anything, other than in a strictly law enforcement-related thing, and I wouldn't even call those horrible. So no, those won't, and I'm sorry, the second part of the question.
Just what would be your steepest learning curve with this position?
The steepest learning curve, I think, would be, you know, certainly, learning roads and the public, the DPS, is probably my least, and not that I don't have a solid foundation, because I've been in so many meetings listening to Brad and Steve, and I completely understand some of the issues and things they run into, but I was the Parks and Rec director for a little bit, and I did pull ordinance over to the thing to make it ours, and I'm very familiar with public safety, have a very good relationship with the current fire chief, I understand public safety world, so all of those departments, I feel very comfortable. I have a very good grasp, I feel, on the finance issues, because there's such an intersection between finance and law, you know, you quickly, so often, your answers go to the same thing. It's a statute, and sometimes you need a calculator, and then sometimes you write a brief. But I think that's would be it, the steepest. I don't think it's very steep, but if I'm saying there's the place where I would want to first go to and go, "Hey, what do I need to learn?", probably there.
Okay. Thank you. And then what past experience will you use to help develop our downtown and business district?
So what I, what I know about Garden City is this. One, we should have a greater downtown, because we are located along a state trunk line to major county roads, and we get a lot of people coming through town. And so what I know is, is I can solve any problem if I can boil it down to what we need to get done, and I do know what we need to get done. I know we need to attract people to our downtown, and I know how to study a problem and solve it. So what I think we lack is placemaking in our downtown area. What do people build around? I've lived in southeast Michigan my whole life. I know what makes me go to a place. I go to downtown Plymouth to have dinner and stuff. There's a nice park there, there's events there. They have chili cook-off type things, they have ice sculpture things, they have things like that, but they also have a place to center around that commercial development wants to build around. So I know that. I know that sometimes it's best to go to the experts. That's what a good city manager does, and we have an excellent economic development director who's very well-versed in that. And I also, sometimes, though, I tend to make what can be, "Hey, we should have a better downtown," and do a little bit of positive. What I do know is in 2020, the working world changed. We are now living in a society where hybrid employment's a real thing, and living in a place where you're living and you're working at home all day, you need to go visit a park, you need to go get a coffee, you need to go get, and it's not just, I show up at the end of the night, I eat dinner, I go to bed, I go back to work somewhere else. People are in and around their homes a lot more, and they need a downtown area where they can go and congregate, have unofficial meetings, have, bring their kids with them when they've got, when it's summer, and they've got to find something for them to do because they're home so much. The work-from-home model really has changed the economics around here, and I think it's probably good that we haven't built out for an economy that was before 2020. So we have a lot of vacant land, or empty land, or developable land, that I think the city should become very invested in, making sure that we keep that in mind, that the working world changed, that we can place things owned by the city, and I know, we've discussed in the past, that maybe the city needs to purchase a building to jumpstart some type of economic development down there. And with all of that in mind, I think the mix of commercial and residential is really where the future is because of the new working model, and we can't discount the fact that we work, we are 15 minutes, they say the best average commute is 16 minutes. We are 16 minutes from so many working places. We're 16 minutes from Ford Motor Company, one of the largest employers in the state. If you push it out to 30 minutes, you probably get yourself out to Ann Arbor, one of the other largest employers. We are in a fantastic position to take advantage of that, because a lot of those, I know Ford Motor Company, I think I looked the other day, just as a curiosity, as I was thinking about this particular problem, out of like 1,000 jobs, I would say 700 were hybrid, meaning you're spending two days at the office, you're spending three days at home. So in my mind, if that employer with that kind of scale of economy and the way to change the working market is operating like that, we have a lot of land here that we can start to develop that towards, and I think that is, you know, so what do I know about econ... I know that we need to take advantage of the fact that we haven't developed out, it's probably a much easier process for us to adjust us to the new economy, and that we have a great opportunity to do it. And you're talking about a community that's very safe. You're talking about a community that's invested a lot in infrastructure lately. You're talking about a community that has a great Parks and Rec director that I think would manage the downtown park really well. So I think there's so many opportunities for us to head in that direction, and I think there's, that the sky's the limit. You also already see a lot of development, both just starting to cross over into our municipality, but also on the borders, and there's a lot of money out there to do those development now. And, you know, I'm somewhat thankful that we didn't get that big box store that we kind of always wanted, all of us, including myself, prior to now, that now we have an And that now we have an opportunity to develop our downtown area for what's probably the next 30, 40, maybe forever, years of working, what it looks like to work in southeast Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dole.
What role do you believe the city manager plays in relation to the city council in the community? And what role does the council have dealing with the city manager and administration?
So, the city manager is the carrier out of the day-to-day activities. I mean, you're, you're essentially a board that sets the major decisions within the city. You're going to set how much taxes we, we, we bring in. You're going to set how much each department gets to operate. I'm also, as a city manager, I would be also responsible for taking your vision, as a majority, and carrying that out throughout on a day-to-day basis. But also, it is to, you know, represent the city in the best possible light at all times. And to make sure you're getting along with all the major players within the city and outside of the city. And to advocate for the city sometimes, when you need to, even if it's a disagreement, but in a way that maintains those positive relationships. You know, your, council members as an individual have opinions and stuff, but your decisions come as a whole, and it's important for the city manager to hear those things and carry those out appropriately.
Second question. How do you ensure compliance with legal and ethical standards in city management, including issues related to transparency and accountability?
So, you know, I come from the law enforcement world. I spent, since 2016, honestly, but then, you know, so you have Ferguson, and then you have George Floyd. And the impact that had on law enforcement for transparency and accountability was huge. I even went to the White House as a lieutenant to learn more about law enforcement accountability, and transparency, and building relationships with the public, and holding your people ethically accountable. Because here's the deal. Especially in law enforcement, but also at city government, people don't respond to who they don't trust. And if you don't have strong ethics and accountability, you don't have trust. So what I fall back on every time when I want to do accountability and transparency is I have a process. I build processes that are open and transparent. And when, like at the law, as a law enforcement agency, when someone makes a complaint about one of your officers, you always do an investigation. You always look into it. You always find out the truth of the matter. Then you produce an objective report, and produce that to the person who made the complaint. So, as far as accountability, that's my world. Especially from a legal standpoint, as also an attorney, I understand the laws and the details around that, and the method to make that happen. As far as transparency, I absolutely believe, and I, I'll just go back again, I thought the meeting on the ninth about the Radcliffe Center was a perfect example of, hey, here's what we're doing. The reality is, and you've all looked at budgets, it's hard to understand that document. You need someone to take that document and be able to articulate in a manner that people trust, and say, oh, I understand what they're doing now. And if you're not saying that, sometimes you could have the best intentions, but if you're not doing those things, bad thoughts creep in from other people, like, well, I don't understand what's going on, so it must not be okay. So if you're a good advocate for what you're doing, and a trustworthy source of information, you can overcome and give that transparency that's necessary. Ultimately, it's tough, because local government is, you know, just moving on a day-to-day basis, and things happen, and people, but, but I found at the police department, when people needed to know something, we made sure we answered their questions. And we did it in a manner that they felt like they got, they were heard, and they felt like they got their questions answered. And absolutely, as the city manager, that's times 10. But that's very much my world, and very much what I'm familiar with.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lynch.
If appointed a city manager, how would you manage all of our city services?
Well, we have some fantastic department heads. And as far as a management of city services, I, you know, I know at the end of the day, you know, I say SSI, the most important things to our citizens are safety, schools, and infrastructure. So, if, the water has to be run, and the garbage has to get picked up in a timely fashion. And if you're, they're not, they're, those are indications that there's a problem. Police officers have to show up at your house during an emergency in a very, very quick, reasonable time. And that's all about staying on things, and making sure you're monitoring what's going on consistently. And as I said, I described Chief Murray's old habit of not always being over my shoulder, but always knowing what I was doing. That's my method, is I, I am notoriously, I traveled around the police department with a cup of coffee. I, I go and I manage with a cup of, hey, what's going on? And I find out what's going on, and I offer input, but I also learn a lot about what's going on. I also get a feel for what's going on. So, I'm going to have to get into a car, and go have that cup of coffee over DPS, and at the Parks and Rec, and at the Radcliffe Center, and have those conversations with people to understand what's going on. And also, I'll have regular recurring meetings. You know, a weekly meeting to find out, to get updated. But also, I'm available 24/7. I'm just that type of person, so I'm always going to be managing, and always be available. And that's one of the things I say about someone who's always available, that, that's a benefit of that. And, and lastly, and this relates to managing city services, I would like to set up regular times where I could hear from each council member, either once or twice a week, a set hour, just to know what's going on, what you're hearing. Because at the police department, I was a big believer in data. And data isn't just, I prep a spreadsheet, and I know how many crimes happen. Data is, hey, how do you guys feel about your neighborhood? You know, the stuff that escapes the spreadsheets. So knowing, going to, you know, for the police department, it's having a cop on the block, you find out what's going on in the neighborhood. For a city manager, it's going to the Qantas meeting. For a city manager, it's going out and listening to council members as they travel through the city, and can be a conduit for information for me. So then I can adjust our services, to know if we're deficient somewhere and we don't realize it, to prioritize it if it needs be, to take those things into account. So, you know, managing the services, it's all encompassing. It's finding out from all perspective what's going on, and then making sure I know what's going on at those places, and making sure it's being done right. Which is something I'm very accustomed to doing.
And how do you move forward on issues while at the same time being fiscally responsible?
Well, you know, that I take the lessons of over the last 20 years of watching the city management, the management of the city. I watched, I watched city managers get blood out of a rock to keep the lights on. So, I am notorious a little bit, and, you know, we are doing some improvements at the police department. But I always, I always thought that peep, especially in law enforcement, the officers getting to the house matters the most. If the ceiling tile's a little brown, because some water came through once, and we cleared the leak, and I haven't gotten to the ceiling, I'm going to prioritize, taking, making sure the officers are there to do their job, and that, that the actual public service part of it is, is done. So I think it helps that I'm more than willing, and we have a history of it, is to live on the cheap a little bit when we need to. Don't get me wrong, we've made a lot of upgrades to the city that we've absolutely needed to do. But that's when you do it, when you have the funds to do it. So you have to be cognizant of when and how. And I've lived through enough, a lot of downs, but some ups, too, to know how to navigate, hey, okay, I can, I know how the finance in the city works. I know we're going to have a good year here, here, and here, so let's do these things now, because we can afford it. Look, we've got this, as I say, we've got a $500,000 bond dropping off, we've got, so I'm going to, I'm going to make sure, not just do I have the money today, but is this a cost that's going to be okay in the future? And is it something we can do now and not need that? That fund balance we have, because of Prop A and Headley, is a necessary evil. It just, and I wouldn't even call it an evil. The ups and downs, as we learned this year, of municipal budgeting, retirement costs can go up in a whim. Healthcare costs can go up in a whim. You could have a major lawsuit that you didn't anticipate. Things happen. And if we are in a feast or famine, what we're going to have doing is, we'll have years where we have a whole lot of services, and then we'll have to cut. But if we have a solid fund balance that allows us to smooth out those bad things, then we're going to be able to survive the ups and downs of what just is Michigan municipal budgeting. It's, it's tough, because we're not in a place where, when the property value goes up, so does taxable, tax revenue. It just doesn't. It's capped. It only, it can only go down. It's capped for inflation. So, I know you have to maintain a solid fund balance, because at the end of the day, whether the economy is up or down, police officers, firemen, still have to make it to the, to the run. We have to have enough to do it, and the equipment to get there. The road, the sewers, when the water, we have a water main break, we have to have people to be able to do that, and we have to have the equipment to do it. There's just no other option. So, maintaining that fund balance, maintaining the fiscal responsibility, so long as it's the direction of the council. The council came in today and said, hey, we'd like it to be at this number. That's what the city manager does. But if I'm going based on the history, and what our successes was through all these tough times, that fund balance is essential, we would maintain it. And where we would have the opportunity to do extras, whether it's through grant funding, whether it's through, hey, we've saved enough to be able to do this thing, we're going to, or we have a dedicated revenue stream, sometimes, like we did at the police department, I love a win-win. We would do things that had a cost offset. So yeah, oh, I can hire a police officer. Why? Well, because we're only going to pay for 30% of that police officer, because I'm getting some revenue from over here. So, to improve city services, I'd be constantly scanning for those opportunities. That's why I did the police department, and that's certainly what I do as a city manager.
Thank you. Councilmember Earl.
Thank you. A city manager has to multitask to meet the needs of the council, needs of department heads, and needs of the residents. How do you multitask?
You know, I am, that's what I've been doing for, you know, I'll just go back to, I, I was a full-time law enforcement officer with, one and a two-year-old, when I first started law school. No, one and a newborn. When I first started law school, and I was also in a plainclothes narcotics position. So, I know how to juggle a lot of things at once. I know that I could be typing a document and have to go and do something, and I can handle that. I can come back and forth. And I know how to prioritize very well. I know what's important. And that's part of the, also the history, I think, that benefits me of having worked here so long. I know what's important to Garden City citizens. So if something comes up that I know it's an essential thing, or I can tell, yeah, this is going to be a thing, I better address it quickly. I know how to prioritize that. Stop what I'm doing over here, and get to it. I'm not, I don't have tunnel vision on things. Sometimes I wish I even had a little more, sometimes. I tend to see things in big picture context, so it gives me the ability to know what's all going on at the same time, so that I can operate with multi-things going on. I mean, as a police chief, you know, you could be working on something, chaos erupts, you have to go deal with that, while also making sure you meet the deadlines and that other thing you were supposed to do. So, multitasking, you know, has been a skill I've, I've just forced myself to develop, that I think I do pretty well.
Okay, and describe how you would communicate with the council, the department heads, the staff, and the residents of Garden City.
So, as I said, I think it's essential for the, number one, the city manager to be in regular, almost scheduled contact with council members, and try not to let that slip. I think it's extremely important I hear what you're hearing, so that I can address your issues. You know, every, every other Monday, with all the other things we have on an agenda, may not be a sufficient time for me to be able to hear what you're concerned about. So I think building time with each and every, an equal amount of time for every council member and mayor, to hear what's going on, to be able to address those issues. So that's communicating with them. My department heads would be in regular communication. We'd have a scheduled meeting to make sure we had a scheduled topic. At the police department, I did a regular meeting every Monday that was to address crimes, and develop a plan to address, and quality of life issues. And then usually on Mondays, what I would do is say, hey, here's our problems for the week, how we doing, what are we doing about it? Then I'd check back in on Friday and see what we've accomplished towards that, you know. If it was a longer-term goal, I'd set a later time. But when it comes to the department heads, it's a regular meeting, and it's also regular contact, but also the check back, and how are we doing on that issue? As far as the employees are concerned, they're going to see me, they're going to talk to me. I'm very much out and about as a style of leadership. I think it's important to not just visit, not, not just to be, my leadership style is not paramilitary, even though I come from a parallel military organization. I like to hear everybody's opinion. Like I said, just because someone tells me their opinion doesn't mean it's exactly what I'm doing, doesn't mean I'm going to disagree with it. But I think it's good to get out amongst the employees and let them feel heard, smile, you know, enjoy their, and then, and so they feel comfortable with you, and working for you, and they trust you. And as far as the citizens go, it's almost a very similar concept. I think the city manager needs to be out and visiting some of those, because you're the guy, when you're, or the girl, when you're the city manager, you are the, you are the administrative day-to-day operations manager, and people need to know that person. I, you know, we've learned in police work, that if we send an officer to a public gathering, and he's just there being amongst them and smiling, that there's a huge positive impact right there, without even having a conversation. We know that when the conversations happen, that builds trust. You trust people you know. What's funny is I kind of don't like email, because email's a very cold way to communicate. It always is read negatively, right? So whenever I read an email, I read it in the absolute worst possible way. And I think the same goes for a communication across the city, from the city manager. If I'm writing an email to employees, they're going to read it in the most negative possible way. But if I'm there talking to them about it, and I'm there to talk about it, and that, and same with the citizens, if they hear me speak, and they understand the inflection in my voice, and the mannerisms, like, I think it goes a much longer way to build trust and communication. They actually know what I'm talking about instead of. So, that's my style of communication. Hopefully, I've got your question there, yeah.
Okay, my turn. What experience do you have with labor unions? And I know you answered part of this earlier, but have you negotiated labor contracts with municipal workers? And please give an example of a difficult negotiation, and how you worked through it with the union.
So, I have, well, number one, I've negotiated labor contracts. I've been on both sides of the table. A year and a half on, and I was elected as the vice president of the Patrol Officers' Union. So I've sat on the worker's side of the negotiations, and then as a chief, I've sat on the employer's side of the negotiations. So locally, especially with this last contract negotiation, I was party to pretty much all the negotiations, and some of the strategies and decisions there. Difficult negotiations, even outside, even outside of the, my employment with the city, though, I've negotiated contracts, and I've handled grievances, written briefs, and to go to arbitration, outside of this, and across the state. And I've also, you know, the ones I've dealt with outside were difficult ones, you know, a terminated employee, arguing two or four, four or against them. But as far as locally, you know, we've, we've had employee issues where the misconduct was egregious, and it borderline termination, and things like that. So I've been involved in those negotiations in regards to changing, when I became chief, I reorganized the entire command division, and that took some difficult negotiation, because it required officers who were comfortable in a position, and I know Councilmember Earl will understand this, who have become accustomed to a certain way of doing things. And they, but I didn't think, I thought it was detrimental to the organization, that we moved different schedules, put people in different roles. And especially in a union environment, you get set in those roles, and you become comfortable. In fact, you base your life around it, so I understand the consternation. But at the end of the day, we're an organization that needs to operate efficiently and lean. So what I was able to do is, is to basically do a little give and take, but I think the city got a lot, is to reorganize the structure. It saved us on overtime. It, it, it made a more efficient and effective command structure. We went from one, I was the road patrol commander, and then, and there was a commander over the investigations division. And I felt that there needed to be an extra lieutenant on the road to support the sergeants, because we were getting all these new sergeants. So I had to change around, and the role of lieutenant really became a lot harder. And we were able to negotiate that, and get them to agree, and it was much for the betterment of the department. But it wasn't easy to do. But, but I think I do a good job of giving both sides perspective. One, I understand where they were coming from 100%. And if you pretend like you don't understand where they're coming from, or they're silly for wanting what they want, then you don't get anywhere with anybody. But I also am a good, articulating our perspective, the city's perspective, like, and I always come back to, we're all in this together. Like, there's no us versus them, especially with labor units. If the city's not doing well, contracts negotiations aren't going to be great. But if the city's doing well, because we're all together, working in an efficient, organized way, then the city's going to do good. And what the city has been traditionally good at is when employers buckled, employees buckled down and did the hard job, we made sure, as soon as we could, we repaid that favor, with, with benefits and pay and things like that. So, you know, I, I've been party to quite a few locally, and, you know, outside of here. But I, I'm a, I'm a big believer in hearing what the other has to say genuinely, to understand where they're coming from. And I think that's the most important part of a negotiation. Because if you pretend, if you do this good guy, bad guy, like, they're the bad guy, because they don't give me what I want, and I'm the good guy, because I want what I want, it's righteous, that doesn't get you anywhere. If you don't understand where someone else is coming from, you're just going to yell at each other. And that doesn't benefit anybody. So my strategy always, to understand the other side's perspective, give a little, take a little, and make sure at the end of the day, the city does as best as it possibly can. Because ultimately, employees who are happy produce really good work. So you have to make sure you're cognizant of that, but also we've got to operate efficiently, so.
Thank you. What makes you a successful manager?
It all boils down to trust. If you are a fair, trustworthy person, even if they disagree with your idea, they respect it. I've worked for all kinds of bosses. I've, some of my favorite bosses are, are not guys I would go have a beer with. But I trusted them and I respected that what they were doing was in the best interest of the agency and myself and themselves, you know. So if I trust them, I'll work for you. So I think I have a very good reputation, but I hope what it's based on is trust. Because if you trust me, you'll go with me. You'll go along with what I'm positing. But I, but I, in order to maintain that trust, I always have to make sure that when I'm bringing, when I'm positing an idea, that I've taken account how it's going to impact everybody and I at least acknowledge, hey, this is going to be tough, but this is what we're going to do. And if, so, so my, what makes a great manager is trust. Everything else, you need to be sharp, you need to be a good communicator, you need to be present. But ultimately, it's trust that if push comes to shove, I'm going to make the, I'm going to be a, I'm going to be a fair, good person who you'd be okay with working with.
Okay, that's all the questions we have for you. Did you have any questions for us?
Uh, no. I know enough about Garden City. I don't think I have to any questions. But I just wanted to say thank you guys for the opportunity to interview for the position. I really appreciate it. And if, if I so get it, look forward to working with everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take like seven, eight minutes, seven o'clock, Lauren, when we can get the next candidate. Okay, well, welcome, Mr. Ventresco. I'm Mayor Jacobs. We have the rest of the city council. We'll ask you some questions. I'm going to repeat what I told, I said earlier with the other candidate. And that is, the meeting is not live. It is being recorded and will be rebroadcast tomorrow. Just to give every, all the candidates a fair shot, nobody can hear the questions ahead of time. The candidates, obviously, there's only two. They were in alphabetical order. We had one drop out about five o'clock this evening. So it's between you and another candidate. Again, the can, you, all the candidates obviously couldn't hear the questions. Each council member will ask you two questions. And they'll be, they're the exact same questions that each candidate will, will be asked. With that, I'd like to welcome you. And I will ask the first question, which is, tell us something about yourself that you think we, we would like to know.
Well, thank you all first for having me tonight. Appreciate it very much. Well, maybe kind of a reiteration of what you probably had, but I think that, just a brief professional synopsis there, I'll give you for the start. I've been managing, I have approximately 18 years collective experience managing local governments, worked in a number of different states and, and all of my, all of communities I've managed have been of various sizes, but they've all been full service in the sense that they've all had all your standard departments, staff responsibilities that a standard manager or in a council manager form would have. So 18 years' experience working in local government. Have a bachelor's degree in public management and business and a master's in public administration. All, through all my years, I've kept up with professional development in whatever state or community I've been working in to keep myself involved and current with things. I, right now, live in North Carolina. I grew up in the northeast up there and began my career there. And where I, where I grew up, I was actually born in the DC area, but parents migrated up to the New England states when I was pretty young. So I grew up in Maine, New Hampshire, Massachusetts mostly. And my first work out of state was in the Midwest, below you there in Missouri for a bit. And, and right now, I've just finished up a position here in, in North Carolina. And just looking for a new community now to go to, hopefully. And most important thing for me is to find a place where I can put my skills to work to, to benefit the community.
Okay, thank you very much. We will start with Councilmember Witt.
Hello, Mr. Ventresco. My first question is two-parter. With this position being a very important role in our city, how would you prioritize work?
Would I prioritize work? Well, obviously, the prioritization of work, of course, as you alluded to there, this position has a, a lot of things on its plate all the time. You're responsible for every department there and, and to work with your staff as a team and that. So to prioritize, you know, obviously, the, the things you have to do is have a good full spectrum of all the things that do need to be done. And, you know, go forward with your prioritization from that. I don't know if you want me to get specific as to certain things. I mean, I've watched some of your council meetings, so I have some ideas, your topics and things. But in general, prioritization is, what I do, of course, is gather all the things together that need to be done. And, you know, obviously, there's, sometimes, you always have to multitask in this profession. I've learned that. So you, you know, it's not like taking one project and just moving with it. You're constantly juggling a number of them. So the prioritization tactics I use, of course, is seeing which ones, obviously, that need to come forward first and, and moving forward with those. I also, you know, work with my departments and everything to make sure that we're all coordinated. And, and that helps me with my prioritization of what, what comes first. But, you know, again, if I'm, well, not getting off too far on this question, but, you know, in general, the, the things you focus on, of course, in this profession are, you know, human relations or should I say, public, public relations, personnel, budgeting, and obviously, the many, many projects. And I know you have quite a few on the burner right now. So, but anyway, I hope I'm tackling your question correctly, but the prioritization methods is just, you know, getting to know what needs to be done and, and putting them on a, a proper timeline to get them done and keeping you all informed as well.
Thank you. The second part of that question, and by the way, please do go into specifics if you have ideas with what is upcoming. But what are you, what are your goals for a 30-day, six-month, and a one-year kind of plan to hit the ground running?
Okay. Well, the first 30 days, I, I always look at as the drinking end of information period. You can only learn so much from a distance. So you have to really get inside the organization, get to know everyone, get to know the, the, the things that really need to be done. And, and that's where you really are able to put that prioritization schedule together that you mentioned is so important. So number one, proactively as well, I should mention, getting out and getting, not only getting to know what's going on inside the organization, but of course, getting out in the community, working with the, the business community, the, the other organizations, the citizens and the stakeholders, letting them know I'm the new person there and I have an open-door policy. And so getting the word out to everyone. And again, drinking in all the information I can about the projects you have going and making sure that they continue along the way. And, and then also, while I'm doing that, assessing, you know, things that I want to bring forward and, and things that I've noticed. But, so the first 30 days is orientation, making sure I get to know everyone and getting to know what's on the plate for the, for the city. And in the, at the same time, gathering my agenda up to inform you of any assessments and things that I think necessary. Next was 60 days, I believe.
Six months.
Six months. Well, in six months, I hope to force the orientation thing, although there's always, you know, usually takes a year or so to really get into everything. But in six months, I hope to certainly have, you know, the projects you have on the burner now. I know you've got a bunch. You've got your Radcliffe project there and you're doing the water lines and, and it looks like you have something going for Safe Streets. And so you've got a lot of projects there. I hope to move those along, continue right along. By that, I want to make things as seamless as possible and, you know, sort of scoot right in there and, and drive things. Working, of course, with you and, and the staff. So hopefully, you know, we get those projects and I will have more things to bring to you and whatever else might be on the agenda. I'm sure I don't know it all, that's for certain, watching a few council meetings. But hopefully to have that. And by the sixth month, of course, I hope to have been established in whatever, you know, business organizations there and groups that I might be going to and committees and that sort of thing. So, and, and by that time too, I will hopefully have done, you know, an assessment of things and, and giving you an update. And then, of course, whatever tasks you might have, which would be the first thing I'd ask you if we go forward and seeing whatever you need me to work on in that time. Didn't mention that at first, but that's very important to me. Well, a year, kind of, it will, of course, depend on, you know, what I find and what projects that I add to the list or that we, that come our way and are forced on our list, which is commonly the case and a lot of times. But I would hope to whatever, you know, whatever, I hope, I would hope at that time to have started some new things that are, to enhance and they're good for the city and be moving forward with them.
And then the other, the other question I have is, why, why do you think you are the best candidate for the city?
Well, I'm sure you have some good candidates there and I'm sure we have a lot of matching skills. But, so I'll kind of just point out the things I think that, you know, make me stand out anyway. One, I think my, my well-rounded understanding of government. I've worked, as I mentioned, with 18 years' experience and seen a lot since I have worked in different states and kept up with my training and that sort of thing. I've worked in, as I mentioned, every community I've been in. I've, at full, worked in all the departments and, and pretty much all the, at least all of what I call customary things that, that you face as a, a city manager. So very well-rounded. However, also, very, I take a lot of care to really be an expert in those things that are so important for municipalities. Kind of alluded to them before, which is good public service, staff concerns, obviously working with the staff and making sure everything's good in the workplace. And the finances, budgeting, I usually find those are the, some of the key things that take up much of your time in most organizations. And of course, another big thing is community development and economic development's always a big thing in communities. So those things I've done a lot in, that are most key things that tend to pop up everywhere, at least at every place I've been. So very well-rounded and to sum up, very well-rounded and, and yet, very, very in-depth knowledge on the things that are important for a city manager. And just love what I do very much and love working with people. And so I think you really need to, need to have that in this profession as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Councilmember Squires.
Good evening, Mr. Ventresco. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me again.
My first question, if I were to interview the people who have reported to you in the past, how would they describe your management style?
I think they would definitely say that I'm a very inclusive, collaborative leader. I know those are terms that are so often thrown around, but I've always practiced that way from the day I, day one of my management. By that, I mean, I, I work with them as, as a team and involve them as much as, you know, they want and they're appropriate in the decisions and helping me, should I say, helping me come to those decisions. And I've found that that works very well with, especially in the public sector. Seems the staff really wants to have a part in the organization. So again, very collaborative, open environment. Now, I, I will say that each workplace has its own culture and sometimes you, I've found leadership is really along a spectrum. So, you know, sometimes you, some require a little more, maybe a little more hands-on than some others. And I usually work with the, with the staff to get that happy meeting. But I think they would say I'm, number one, very open to their ideas and I seek that. Keep good communication with them. We have our, obviously, the standard meetings that we have. And definitely, I'm sure they would say that I'm always there for them. I have an open door, you know, proverbial, but it's true, an open-door policy. Everyone, just like yourselves, have, are welcomed and, and I encourage it because no one wants to bother anyone. But I really, I am a 24/7, and I recognize this is a 24/7 job. They are welcome to call me anytime. And as I like to tell, especially my road workers and utility workers, if you've got a major issue, I don't care, probably better to call me at that three in the morning when you're out there doing it. So then I don't have to be too surprised at eight. So, but anyway, so there for them. I think they would say very accessible and understanding and empathetic as well. Those are some things that come to mind, I hope.
Okay, thank you. My next question, describe three components of your philosophy of management that demonstrate what you value and add as an individual to an organization's culture and work environment. And how have you demonstrated these in your past job?
Okay, so three aspects of my, of my management style, would you say?
Yes.
Well, I don't want to be repetitive, but the first one, I think definitely a very accessible, open and collaborative environment. I would say a focus on, a focus on making sure we're all competent in what we do and serving the public. I think that's very important, competent and providing seamless service to the public. I've found that those are things that you constantly have to, or make sure that they're in place well. Let's say there's, there's kind of two there. I guess the other would be, or I said, collaborative style, working with, I'm trying to remember that. I think the third one would probably be, I think another role very important would be just open and transparent and, in all you do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there was an to that too, if I remember there on that question there. Apologies on that.
Yeah, it was, have you, how have you demonstrated these in your past jobs?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's kind of repetitive, but...
Yeah, yeah, yes. Well, thank you. That's why I'm mumbling a little bit. I, I think that definitely, and that's my, what I try to do, maybe another thing I should have mentioned is, I, and I hope that staff will recognize is I, I work on a, I really try to lead by example. So I would be exuding these characters, characteristics that I've been discussing because I have to, I, I display them and do them. So I don't expect the staff or anyone else to do any more than I do. So I would be doing my best to model these things that I think are important and showing that, you know, that's what I hold myself to the same standard.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Karafodis.
Does your past experience limit your success as a city manager? And what would be your steepest learning curve related to this position in Garden City?
What was the first part of that? Does my past...
Experience limit your, your success as a city manager?
I wouldn't think so, no. I can't think of a way it does. As I mentioned, I, I have 18 years' experience doing this. And I know we always think that we've seen everything, but I always know there's something new will hit us at one time or another. But I, I can't think of anything that, that would limit it. I, you know, feel pretty, you know, confident in what I do. So I can't think of that. And I apologize. The second part of that was...
Was what would be your steepest learning curve related to this position?
Well, as I say, I don't, I can't think of anything too limiting. The steepest learning curve, and I really haven't had any problems with it. But obviously, the new thing is when you go to a new state, there's always something you have to learn new because each state does have different rules and regulations. Although I have to admit, and in the, what have I been in, five different ones, that there is more similarities and differences. There are just slight degradation, degradation or differences in them. So I haven't found, but that would probably be the, choosing the, the number one thing, the only thing I can think of that's really different in, in that respect, that to really hit the ground running. And as, and as I mentioned, always, every organization, you know, has its own culture to some extent. So getting used to the culture is always something wherever you go.
Okay, thank you. And also, what past experience will you use to help develop our downtown in our business district?
Uh-huh. Well, that's a, that's a good question there. Actually, I've worked a lot in downtowns. It's not on my resume, but my first job was as assistant community development director. And they had just got into the Main Street program. I don't know if you're in that. You may have heard of it before. So my job was to actually work on with the businesses to help beautify the downtown and build it up. That's going way back. I've done a heck of a lot more since then. But I just, kind of going back to the past. So I started out working in that area, really. Didn't stay there too long and moved into management. But in every position I've been in... moved into management, uh, but in every position I've been in, uh, especially in the smaller communities, that's been my full responsibility. And, um, talking about the Main Street program again, which is focused on downtown, I actually have, uh, introduced that in three communities I've been in. I think it's a good program. Uh, and, um, I've also, um, worked closely, uh, in a couple of communities I've had. We've had actually organizations that were focused on the downtown. Um, I'm trying to think of some other things we've done with downtown, but I've done a lot, uh, a lot of it involved facade improvements. Um, there, in a couple of communities, we had grants, uh, that were focused on that, uh, which helped the, uh, where the existing businesses beautify and upgrade their facades. Uh, I helped coordinate that, working and setting them up with, uh, the people that could help them, uh, and, uh, determining who would get certain, uh, grant dollars and those sort of things. But worked a lot in, uh, in downtown and in economic development in general, um, and done a lot in downtowns as well. As you, I know every place is different, but a lot of the downtowns I was in had, you know, places, there were empty storefronts and things, so we worked to, uh, try and fill them or keep them looking nice and bring new businesses in, uh, as well to the downtown.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Dole.
Good evening, Mr. Ventresco. Good evening, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
What role do you believe the city manager plays in relation to the city council in the community? And what role does the council have dealing with the city manager and administration?
Well, I've been in a lot of communities and I work for a lot of different councils and I know that each council has its own sort of feeling about that regardless of, of what the, uh, the law might say. But I tend to, uh, hew to the, the standard council manager form. I think it keeps, it's the best in the sense for, uh, it keeps, you know, it helps the staff to know who to report to and that sort of thing. So, um, like, uh, again, the basic council manager form I believe in, which is the manager takes care of the day-to-day operations, um, of the, uh, the organization, making sure everything's running fine and, uh, and taking care of all the issues the staff might have, uh, working with them. Uh, and, uh, the council, of course, focuses on the, the policy decisions, uh, and the, uh, the, the big picture. Uh, but of course, a very important role also for the, uh, the manager is to inform the council and keep them up to date and prepared for all the things that are on the agenda and those important decisions that they have to make, uh, that we have to carry out. Uh, so again, taking care of the staff, I do think it's, uh, is important, uh, in the council manager form for the, uh, you mentioned the relation there of the, I think the manager interacts with the staff and, um, takes care of that and the, and the council works through the manager for that. Now, as I say, I've been in a number of different communities and unless the law said different, so there was a, a strict, uh, uh, charter in place that forbid it, sometimes the council likes to be a little more involved than others. Uh, but in, in general, where the council manager form is, I, I usually, I prefer that, uh, that method.
Thank you. My other question is, how do you ensure compliance with legal and ethical standards in city management, including issues related to transparency and accountability?
How do I assure them? Uh, well, uh, number one, uh, working together with, uh, with the staff and everyone, I, I make sure that we're all on the same page about that. I think transparency and, uh, is very important, accuracy, transparency, uh, clearness as much as possible, being as clear as you can, uh, whether you're, whether you're dealing with the public or, uh, everyone in the case of a, at a council meeting, uh, or just communicating with, with you, uh, or the staff. I make sure that, I'll go back to my, um, leading by example again, I hold myself to, uh, the same high standards in that, in those areas, uh, as I do my staff. And, uh, I expect us all to be open, transparent and, uh, uh, and do our best to, you know, when people pose questions to us or whether it be the general public, yourself or whoever, to, uh, make sure we get back to them, uh, in, in an efficient manner. Uh, what, you know, if not, we explain why and follow up and make sure our information is, uh, is accurate and, uh, and again, just being as transparent as we can and, uh, as truthful as we can as public servants. Uh, but I may, I'm, I assure of that by, again, myself, uh, I, I hold myself to equally as high standard as I do my staff. And, um, communicating that, uh, from day one, I find is important and, uh, just keeping us along the same line during our, 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 uh, meetings and, um, in our interactions as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Lynch.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If appointed as city manager, how would you manage our city services?
What I manage the city services? Um, very customer-centered, I think that's very important to, uh, that. I think I mentioned before, a thing that's really important to me that I've noticed that, uh, sometimes in these working, I'm not saying it does there and I have no indication that it does, uh, is making sure, uh, the administration, myself, all the people we talked about, which is basically the whole, uh, city government, uh, is working in a unison fashion and not in, if you're getting into terminology here, uh, stovepipe fashion where, where, you know, one department's doing, totally has no idea what the other's doing and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, telling one per- one department's telling, uh, one person to do this and another department's telling him to do something else. So making sure that we have a seamless and, uh, a consistent message, uh, for the, our citizens that we serve. And, um, and I'm always there as well to, uh, answer questions and, uh, as I say, the buck stops here at, uh, at my office. Uh, but I, I want to instill that, that, uh, again, leading by example, I'm not asking that anymore for anyone else, then I, I hold myself probably to the highest standard on that to make sure that, uh, I give as excellent customer service as, as possible. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, following up and, uh, doing our best to, uh, to address whatever issues the, uh, the public might have.
Thank you. One more question. How do you move forward on issues while at the same time being fiscally responsible?
Mm-hmm, very, very important, yeah. That's always a, a challenge with our limited revenue and, uh, and increasing expenditure sides all the time. Well, it is, and as I mentioned, one of the most important things that I think take the time of a, of a manager is, is, is crafting that budget, uh, working with you all, of course, who have to final approve it. And, uh, I know some communities also have a budget or a finance committee as well. Uh, I don't know if, I didn't, don't recall if you did or not, but, uh, working with them if possible, um, but, uh, crafting that budget, it's, it's really a year-round thing, of course. Uh, keeping your eye on the spending, always looking for, uh, ways, grants or, uh, opportunities to, uh, to help that budgeting situation. Looks like you've done that pretty well as well with, uh, as I mentioned, I watch some of your meetings and it looks like you've gotten some good grants for streets and, uh, water projects and, uh, and the big, uh, park project, right, what they're doing and, uh, so, uh, but working along those lines and carving the budget out as best we can. Uh, and going back to one of your other questions, that's where priorities come in real important. Um, you can't, usually can't do everything you want in one year, so you have to, do have to prioritize and, uh, uh, pick the ones that, you know, that you need to do now and maybe you could wait a little longer, uh, for the other, for, for, for the many others that are waiting. Uh, so it is a continual thing, but I've usually done it pretty well. I've been in a number of, uh, uh, communities that, uh, that were very conservative in that respect and, um, and, uh, always won, did very well in that. Actually brought a couple of communities, uh, who did have some issues and we have noticed some of them on my resume, uh, where they had some issues with, uh, just really, you know, spending maybe wasn't totally appropriate and we wound up saving a lot of money. Every place I've been in, we've either saved or kept the line. I can't, I don't really call any place that, uh, that we've ever had any issues with, um, overspending.
Next, Councilmember Earl.
Yes, sir. A city manager has to multitask in order to meet the needs.
Turn, bright, turn your mic in.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that. A city manager has to multitask to meet the needs of the council, the department heads and the residents. Uh, can you describe how you multitask?
Mm-hmm, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, multitask. Uh, use all the instruments I can, the electronics and, uh, the, and then the, uh, and then the old-fashioned way as well. Uh, have notes all around and, uh, my desk will not be the cleanest because I will have lots of reminders and things. Uh, but, um, uh, well, number one, it is, as I said, it's really a 24/7 job. You're in the office and, uh, you've got to constantly be focusing on that. Uh, but it's just, you know, using whatever methods you're used to. Mine have evolved over the years, uh, as technology has helped out a lot. Uh, but again, uh, as, as you just, uh, so correctly said, uh, dealing, uh, taking care of the staff, the citizens and yourself. Um, I just, uh, you know, you, you've got to be present, uh, you can't be absent from the office and that sort of thing. I mean, unless you're obviously doing things important like a, a training or what have you, but you gotta, you gotta be present, uh, engaged, uh, and, uh, and I think also very key is, you know, getting, making sure that, uh, you know, you're, you're connecting well with your staff because you have to, obviously that you're only as good as your staff too. So we have to make sure and have that, uh, good working together as a team to make all these things happen. Uh, so it is a team effort as well. Yeah, even though I might be leading it or, or managing it, uh, the key there too is to make sure my, uh, my team's working well and they're cared for and, and we're all working together to make those things happen. But again, for me, uh, it's a, it's a continual thing and I, I use many methods to, uh, and you just hit it on the head when you said it's a multitasking thing and, um, but I've had good, I'll be honest, it's one of the reasons I like this profession is, uh, I do like the, the multitude of things to do. I would, I, rather than doing just one thing all the time, uh, so, um, I think I'm quite, uh, I'm quite fit. It's one reason I really like the profession, actually.
Yes, sir. Describe how you would communicate to the council, to the department heads, the staff and the residents of Garden City.
How would I communicate? Well, it's, uh, definitely open communication. Uh, if you mean the actual, uh, vehicles I'd use, uh, uh, pretty much use the standard things, uh, email communications, uh, obviously with the staff, we're there. Uh, we'll, we'll talk about the staff first. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, I have, will usually have our standard, but a couple, every, uh, every couple of weeks meeting or a week, whatever, kind of is the norm or whatever, whatever, uh, is needed. Uh, and, uh, as I mentioned, I, I'm, I'm there and present, I have my open door policy and, uh, usually wind up working, at least meeting with some department heads every day. Uh, so keeping constant communication. Uh, board members, I'm, I'm same here, I'm, uh, you're welcome all to come and see me. I make sure that you all, obviously though, have the same information. I, I, you know, don't, uh, play favorites and, you know, give one info without the other, so I always mention that. But you're all welcome to, um, you know, uh, my door is of course open to you all as well. Um, as for meetings, uh, make sure that, uh, you have what you need at your council meetings, your packets and, and everything is there for what's on the agenda and that I'm prepared to, to answer those questions. About the communication, again, I use a lot, uh, obviously email's a big thing. If you're talking about the, the actual on-the-ground, uh, how we do it, uh, for the staff and you all. Um, as for the community, uh, I, there's obviously a lot of ways to communicate with the community now. It looks, looks like you're doing a great job, actually. Uh, you have all your meetings posted and, uh, the websites, uh, well, those are the things I like to use, the public access channel, uh, the, um, the website, which I think is your, the key nowadays, kind of your central thing. And of course, uh, social media, yeah, everyone uses that to some extent, uh, nowadays and I'm, uh, I do that as well. Um, so, um, so use all methods possible for communication to the, uh, to the public and newsletters, I've, uh, found that, a lot of communities like that, so, uh, I've done that in a number of communities as well.
Okay, uh, it's my turn. What experience do you have with labor unions and have you negotiated labor contracts with municipal workers? And please give, give an example of a difficult negotiation and how you worked through it with the union.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I have. Uh, in a number of communities I've had, uh, unions in and, uh, collective bargaining and MOUs and the things that come with that. Uh, so, um, yeah, and it's funny you mention because I always remember one, uh, negotiation that happened to be in, uh, 2008, right as the financial crisis was, uh, taking place or really, uh, just appearing for everyone to know it was true. Uh, we had to negotiate where I was working in a contract with a couple of departments and, uh, the council made it pretty clear to me that, that the econo- the economic situation was, uh, quite unclear and, you know, we were going to have to, uh, not give, uh, certain raises and perks that we were probably anticipating for the renewal of that contract. So, um, that was a difficult one. Uh, we did get through it, it was longer than anticipated, uh, but, uh, you know, and the way we did it is, uh, really just, you know, working as a team. I tried to pull in the staff, say, listen, this is, we're going into a, a difficult period, we need you all to really understand, we're going to get through it and we'll, you know, hopefully be able in some ways to make up after it. Uh, but right now, this is what we can offer and, and, you know, we've moved forward in that direction. And of course, as you might imagine, it was back and forth and back and forth, uh, but we did come out with a, um, a compromise and, uh, everyone lived with it and, you know, no one walked out and that sort of thing. That's probably what comes to my mind is, uh, when you said that, that's kind of a, I remember that one pretty clearly. Uh, so that was one, but I've, uh, you know, I've worked with, uh, Teamsters, Ask Me, uh, and, um, there's one or two others that are slipping my mind right now, uh, in, uh, for collective bargaining and, uh, and working with, uh, union personnel.
And last question, what makes you a successful manager?
What makes me a successful manager? I would say just, uh, well, there's a lot of things go into that, of course, a lot of ingredients. I think what, uh, makes me a successful manager is, um, not to sound like a broken record, but my well-rounded understanding and knowledge in local government and, and my understanding as well that it's a continual learning process. I love what I do and, um, I'm always usually reading something about it, uh, and trying to make myself better. I'm a, I'm a big believer in continuous improvement and, um, always continuing to learn. Uh, so I think my knowledge base, uh, and my commitment, uh, my sincere commitment to hard work, uh, uh, and just, uh, enjoying what I do and giving it my all, um, makes it, uh, makes me successful at it.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of our, uh, interviews or questions. Uh, I want to thank you for taking time out to apply and, and come on Zoom with us and, and wish you the best and we'll see where this goes from, uh, the, the, our tallies. So thank you, thank you again for joining us, Mr. Ventresco.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for having me, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night now.
Okay, we'll take a couple of minutes to our sheets and then we'll move on from there to comments and that, right? Okay, welcome back. First off, I want to thank both candidates for the interview, taking time out and for applying. I thought they both did a great job, so we'll see how the, the scores play out. At this time, we'll go to public comments. We waive the non-agenda items only for this meeting, but it'll be comments only, it won't be questions. So anyone wishing to speak from the public? Go ahead, state your name, please.
Lisa Poma, and I've been a resident here for 32 years. And I want to say this, I think Tim, he grew up here, most of you probably seen him grow up, went to school, teach them, whatever. And I think he's, he's your ideal for your city manager. It's not personal, I hope he does, and I hope that's who you want. I think, I think it's a formality what you're going through. I think you guys already have a mind, that's who you're going to choose. The only thing I ask for is transparency. Now, Tim said something tonight to me that I heard you say in your speech, but once you were elected, nothing happened about bonding with the library. You guys ended up suing the library for money that they owe in the back, but yet there's a gentleman at Radcliffe who owes back money and nobody's doing anything about that. There used to be a resident here who would come up every meeting and complain about how much money the library owed, how much money. I haven't seen him up here once at one of these meetings to say, what are you guys going to do about the tenant at Radcliffe owing money? And then when you guys praised Dale, you put him on a pedestal, he left. We found out he knew nothing about the DTE bill at Radcliffe. He's making verbal agreements. He didn't take care of a leaky roof, which we don't know how many times the tiles have been replaced, the carpeting been replaced. All I'm asking for is transparency. You want me to trust, I put you guys in those seats and I'm not the only one that voted for you, obviously a lot of people did. And we put our trust and our faith in you to represent us, to help us live here affordability, not keep raising the taxes. I'm, I'm a senior now, I hate to say that, I can't believe I am, but I am. But I'm on a fixed income now and taxes are going up like crazy. I don't know if I'm going to be able to live here anymore. I want you guys to take care of us like you promised you would. Be honest and open with us. Don't, don't do behind-the-door-bag deals. Don't say one thing to our face and then go back there and say something different. That's not fair to us. That's not why we put you in those seats. We want to trust you guys. You have to, you guys have to earn my trust again. I don't have it right now. And although Tim talks faster than my daughter Kim does, the gentleman up there talks slower, but I know that's your choice. By the looks on your face, I know that's your choice. And you know, who wouldn't want Tim? He's a likable guy, he's a knowledgeable guy, but can he do the job? He suffered a tragedy, we all felt sorry for Tim. We all chipped in and helped him. So is he in debt to us? I don't want that. Are there going to be special favors asked of him because of that? I don't want that. I want the job done the way it's supposed to be done, like you guys promised you would do it. That's all I'm, and transparency, that's all I'm asking for. And I'd be happy with that. And I'd be happy to stay in my house if I can still afford it. We got to do something about these, these, increasing the money. Got to stop paying the money. We, we got to give us a break. You do.
Thank you. I will say this, I personally did not come in with any preconceived who I was voting for.
Come on, it's Timmy. You guys refer to him as Timmy. Come on.
I don't refer to him as Timmy, but I'm just going to say, there's, I had no perceive, and I haven't talked, it's not a discussion, I'm just answering.
For all I know, for all I know is when Dale decided to leave, it wasn't discussed that Tim would fill his shoes. It just, I'm sorry, Timmy, it's, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But if I'm right, I'm right.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Opal Loveland. I think a better effort could have been made to obtain more candidates. I think this was a shortcut and I think your decisions were pretty much predetermined. I do. That's just my opinion, but that's what I think. The word trust was thrown around quite a bit tonight. I agree with Lisa Poma. I don't trust anybody here. You have to earn our trust back. We've been lied to, we've been stolen from, our bonds have been misappropriated, the sidewalk fiasco, the toxicity that's throughout this town, not even working together, all of you, you, Disson, other council members and prospective council candidates. It's not right. It's a toxic atmosphere and I'm sick of it. And you do need to earn our trust back. And last night, they presented another request for the 3.5 safety mileage. No numbers were given to anybody. We just want another 3.5. How much is 3.5? What does that bring into the city? Does anybody have an answer for me for that? Nobody asked that question. What is their budget? How does it augment it? Those positions they have, 10 police department, 10, 11 fire department? We know when the DDA, Community Director, was hired, how much it costs for an employee? You can't keep doing budget stuff without offering some numbers and justifying it. That's not how the real world works. So we expect more and we expect honesty and we don't like being lied to and I don't like being played. And I feel like this whole process here was just predetermined.
Thank you.
Were there six people and now only two?
There's originally 21, it was paired to six. Went to, we offered five, six to be interviewed. Three dropped out, actually two dropped out and then one dropped out at 5 o'clock this evening.
They say why they dropped out?
Not all of them, no. Anyone else? I don't know what to say right this second. Two people, it's going to determine the fate of us for the next five years. I think we need to start over. I think we need to define exactly what the city manager's responsibility is. And we can fall into the fact that you, as a council, have neglected to address the independent managerial audit that's been on the table for quite a while. And Stacy, thank you for the information you provided us. Mr. Witt, you spoke out of line. Because we need to have an established program. We have not had this for 15 years. Jay Lee, you got a quarter of a century here. You and your job, you dealt with dead money. What are we going to do to create a cash flow? What happened with the Goodfellas the other day, I don't understand, but that is an over-exuberant group of individuals that think they know all the answers and us peons on the other side of the moat are being stiffed. You are taxing us to death? You don't give us explanations of what's going on? Technically, right now, I'd probably be the best city manager you'd have. And I do have a resume that I'm surprising myself on what I've done, but I don't need aggravation. So what are you people going to do to correct the problems we've inherited? I'm not comfortable coming up here, but something's going to happen. And remember, the Giuliani Act is a document that if I used the proper word, Mr. Asher would have said, I was intimidating you. What about procedure irregularities and administrative manipulation? You guys have done that. You've done it through the, one gentleman that has been our police department. I'm not happy with York Gate. Why did you let the city manager be judge, juror and executor? What kind of measurable, creative measurables have you created to make sure that never happens? Are you going to do anything positive or do we have to take it outside of this building? And you don't want to take it into the court because me, the citizen and the rest of us are going to get screwed. So maybe we ought to just drop hiring the city manager until you get your act together on proper litigation. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Nobody else? Okay, having no more comments, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Mark, when will we know who you select?